Good morning, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for December 10th, 2018. If you please rise if you can for the pledge. CAO, Mr. Lutz, can you please lead us?
Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk.
This is a time for board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Is there any member of the board that has an announcement this morning? Seeing none, staff, is there a staff member with an announcement? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, recognition and acknowledgements.
Item one is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing the service of Supervisor Michael C. Olivera to the residents of Calaveras County.
Supervisor Garimendi, I believe you have this proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and it is my pleasure to read this proclamation today for a gentleman who I've spent the last two years sitting next to and working with, and someone who I've really appreciated their service to our community. So, no further ado, I'm reading a proclamation recognizing Michael C. Olivera's four years of service to the residents of Calaveras County. Whereas Mike was elected to serve the residents of Calaveras County in 2014 as a representative of District Three, attending his first meeting as supervisor on January 13, 2015, and whereas Mike has taken on many issues within his district, the county, and the state, and even the nation, serving on many boards and task forces such as the California State Association of Counties, the National Association of Counties, and the Governor's Task Force on tree mortality, and whereas throughout his term, Mike drew upon his longstanding knowledge of law enforcement and the Highway Four corridor to make decisions on behalf of his constituents regarding issues such as public safety, road maintenance, and snow removal matters, and whereas Mike took great pride in representing Calaveras County, provided unwavering support to the county staff, and modeled professionalism and civility throughout his tenure, and whereas throughout his term, Mike has demonstrated a willingness to champion causes he believes in, no matter how pressured the situation may be. Now be it proclaimed that the county... Nope, excuse me.
Is there any board member comments? Supervisor Mills.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Olivera for his service to his community and to the residents of Calaveras County. I know that it's been a very tumultuous period, but at the same time, I think you've weathered a storm well and served your constituents well, as your ability gave... Your background and your ability gave you the willingness to do that. So, thank you for your time that you've taken to, from your life, to represent your community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If I could add, I would just want to thank Mike very much for his friendship over his last two years, and the help that you provided during the Butte Fire and our recovery for my district. Thank you very much.
Mike, it's been a pleasure working with you on this board and other committee boards that we sit on together. It's been a real pleasure seeing you do your job and how you do it and you tackle it, and the friendship that we came between us over the course of time, the past two years here. I will remember it for a long time. So, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. I was the longest-serving person with you on the board. I had an extra month or so with you, and it was a joy, and I'll always remember it. I did enjoy being with you and with the board. It was a pleasure, and thank you for your time and serving with me.
And with that, we'll open up the public comments. Public comments.
Morning, Board, Chair, Sheriff D'Arcilio. Mike, I want to say thank you for your service to the Sheriff's Office while I worked with you during that time, and it gave you a very good perspective being, sitting on that board of what law enforcement goes through with your background in law enforcement. I think it assisted us tremendously. I worked a few projects with you up in the Highway Four corridor, so I appreciate your service, and if there's anything I can do for you, let me know. I appreciate your time. Thank you. Thank you.
Santa came, so there's a gift, but I want to let you know, Mike, I was so pissed off on you a couple of years ago when you voted Edson in for the second year. I just, I didn't know I'd ever get over it, but watching you for the past couple of years since then, I've come to appreciate your fairness and your even-handedness, and I've come to, you've gained my respect, so I thank you. Santa has an appropriate gift. Military and displaced. And I'd just like to say, I'll miss seeing you, and thank you for the time that you gave me. I'm going to leave these here.
I'd like to thank you for your service as well. I was sick in bed at the last meeting, and it struck me, your remarks during supervisor announcements. You said basically that if we don't start communicating with each other, we're doomed as a community, and I know that there's been a lot of nasty back and forth. I want to take responsibility for when I did not behave as I would have liked. I forgot my manners or, you know, set them aside during rough political fights. So, I thank you for your service. I also think that it's really important in order for all sides to communicate that we start from a place of honesty, and I found that there was a tremendous amount of dishonesty that was emanating from people who supported your campaign, and I just would like for us to be able to sit down going forward, all of us. I hope you stay involved. I hope to see you at weekly meetings if you're able, and I hope that we can all sit down in a nonpartisan, compassionate place to try to heal the divide that is happening in our community. Many of us want nothing but a safe community, a place, a prosperous place for our children to grow, for our grandchildren to grow. We don't want to pollute the environment. We want to maintain the forests, so please, stay involved. I hope to see you, and help us going forward to reach some kind of an accord so that this county can be a safe place for everybody who lives here. Thank you.
Public comments.
House of Gala Taxpayer Association, I'd like to express my appreciation to Michael, and, well, two main things. One, he's really solid in support of our Constitution. We need that today, and number two, he's developed communication skills in addition to integrity. I've never heard Michael say a bad thing about anybody, and even suggest that those who oppose him are dishonest. It's amazing that, to experience that today in today's political environment. So, Michael, the Taxpayer Association is really grateful for what you've done for our county and what you're set up for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mike, for the service you have given of your life and invested in all of us, and I truly respect your law enforcement background, and I believe that law enforcement is very important, and you added a unique aspect to that, to us, and I thank you for it. And Clyde, thank you for your service also. You weathered a tremendous storm, and I was very proud of how you stood up to it, and you're still standing, and thank you for that. And go Trump!
Other public comments?
Mr. Olivera, thank you. We haven't always seen things eye to eye, but you have always been honest, and a lot of these things have already been said. Ditto. That's about all I can say, but thank you for your service. I hope you do stay involved, and like Ms. Wiki said, I hope you can help to bring two sides to at least a meeting ground. You're a good man. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
George Frye, good morning, Board. Michael, you're an amazing guy. You, I wasn't one of your favorite people in the beginning because of the last board and some of the stuff that went on, but you certainly have rise to the occasion. I want to thank you for your Marine Corps services. I want to thank you for your retirement from the police department in the Bay Area, and I want to thank you for digging in and doing the kinds of things that you have done since you've been on the board. I'm sad that you're leaving. You're probably, in my humble opinion, the best chair that I've seen in over 20 years in board meetings. You treated each and every person with respect, and that's what you got in return, and I thank you very much for your service, Michael.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, all closed public comments. Bring it back to the board. I think CAO, Tim, you have a few words to say.
Yes, I just wanted to add to both from the public comments side as a resident of District Three, but also from staff perspective, I want to thank you for, I always felt that you worked hard to represent your constituents. From a staff perspective, I appreciate that I most always know where you're coming from. You're always direct and honest, but most importantly, even if you have a strong opinion on something, you're willing to listen, to consider, and importantly, to support staff. I feel there's a tremendous loyalty with you that you will defend staff even if they make mistakes, which is certainly something that we need because everybody's human, everybody makes mistakes. It's how we learn from those, and thank you for being supportive of county staff.
Thank you, Tim. Megan?
Just to echo what everybody here has said, it truly has been an honor and a privilege to work with you, Mike. I know you and I haven't always seen eye to eye through the last four years, but I think that's pretty standard when you deal with counsel, but just to echo, it's been truly a privilege getting to know you, becoming a friend, and I look forward to continuing to interact with you and see how you stay involved in the community. So, thank you for all of the service that you've done.
Thank you, Megan. Madam Clerk? No? Okay. Supervisor Garimendi, you want to?
You want to vote?
Yes. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Supervisor Garimendi.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Supervisor Clapp. Call for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
One abstention.
Pass is four, zero, with one abstention.
Had to make it complex, Mike. Now, be it proclaimed that Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Michael C. Olivera for his dedication and public service during his tenure on the Board of Supervisors, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 18th day of December, 2018. Thank you again.
Mr. Chair? Could I take a moment? You can take absolutely the rest of the day if you want.
This is a little hard for me, folks, believe it or not, but I want to thank everybody in the county. I've made a lot of friends, a lot of good friends, but I especially want to thank one person. It's my wife, Jennifer. She's gone through campaigns and four years of sitting up here, been like a rock in the public. Sometimes in our private conversations, once again, we agreed not to disagree or agree. She's been very supportive. To the staff of Calaveras County, you've done the best job you possibly can for what we've given you. I would hope that improves. To this board, it's been a pleasure serving with you. It was a pleasure serving on a prior board, and I want to assure you that I am not going anywhere. I am a part of this community, and I will continue to be a part of this community. I want to thank you, everybody. You people are stellar. Thank you for letting me represent you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that, can you come down front here? I think the whole board.
You're not quite the little kids with chickens, bud. I'm the shortest of the five. Thank you, folks.
Item two is from the Clerk of the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation recognizing the service of Supervisor Clyde Clapp to the residents of Calaveras County.
Supervisor Mills, I believe you have this proclamation.
I do, Chair. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to recognize Clyde Clapp's service to the residents of Calaveras County. It says in it, whereas Clyde was elected to serve as District Five Supervisor in 2016, attending his first meeting as supervisor on December 13th of 2016, and whereas Clyde represented the county on multiple committees and commissions, including but not limited to Area 12 Agency on Aging, Central CR Resources Conservation and Development, and Hardwood Advisory Committee, and whereas throughout his term, Clyde drew on his experience as a contractor, landlord, and businessman to make decisions on behalf of the residents of his district and the county, and whereas Clyde took pride in representing Calaveras County, drew upon his passion and convictions, and was not afraid to express himself bluntly, often giving rise to spirited debate, and whereas throughout his term, Clyde has demonstrated a willingness to champion causes he believes in, no matter how pressured the situation may be. I'd like to add to it that you came in at a time of recall, and so the tumultuous nature of District Five is there. We have served together on this board for now nearly two years, and it has not been always an easy time, but I think that you had clarity and purpose, you had clarity in your decisions of what you thought was right for the county, and you stuck with those, and I appreciate your willingness to express and to defend your decisions and how you felt the county was to be best represented, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Supervisor Olivera?
As Supervisor Clapp, we've had our moments, but they were good moments and bad moments, but we've always maintained the respect of our positions as Board of Supervisors. Good luck in your endeavors. I know I'm feeling somewhat what you're probably feeling now, but I think things are going to get better, and that's, I think that's up to you and me as leading this board, and I think you'll have the same interest in making sure that we can do exactly what we taught or what we said we are going to do, and that's talk to each other and go forward. We have to be part of that process, not as board members, but as citizens of this community. So, good luck, Clyde. Thank you.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Well, Clyde, I've known you for many years. You've sat now in front of the bakery for many years, solving all the crimes, all the problems of the county with your group. You've sat here and board many, for many years, and for the last two years, you have had the opportunity to put some of those things to solve the issues that you see in your district and in the county, and I'll tell you, it's been a pleasure working with you over the course of the last couple of years. You felt strong in many issues, and you hung strong when you felt you was the benefit for your district and the county itself, and I appreciate that in you, those qualities in you. So, I hope to see you. I know I'll see you somewhere at the Terrace Shopping Center when I visit over there and around town, so stay involved as you did before, and I know the bakery's no longer open there, but Common Grounds is there, and I see you out front there many times, so thank you for your work here at the county and the Board of Supervisor.
Thanks.
And with that, we'll open it up to public comments. Any public comments?
Mr. Clapp, how are you doing today?
Well, thank you.
Good. I know we've had some agreements and the old saying, we can agree to disagree, but being now a formerly elected official, I can say thank you very much for putting yourself out there in front of everybody to do the job that you've done.
Thank you.
It takes a lot, and for the people that have never been in an elected position, it's a tough position. It takes a lot out of you and your family, so I thank you very much for your service, and again, I know we've agreed to disagree on a few things, and we have agreed on a lot, but I appreciate your service to this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
House of Gala Taxpayer Association, I too would like to thank you, Clyde, for your service to our county, and one of the things that stood out to us was your integrity, and we could, when you say something, we can believe to be, to be the truth. At least the truth is you see it, and also, you've done more than just be a supervisor. You also supported something new in our state called the State of Jefferson, and we believe that that is a good thing, and that'll help rural counties down the road. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Vicki Renkey. I too want to thank you, Clyde, for your service. I know you were only on the board a couple of years, but I think as citizens, we appreciate honesty and directness, and you always knew where you stood, and getting to know you, I think, you know, you're a great person, like I say, with honesty and integrity, and I want to thank you for the time that you were on the board, and I'm looking forward to hopefully working on some other projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Morse. I just want to thank Clyde also, and also Mike, directing to Clyde now. I appreciate, and dittoing what the other one said, that Clyde, in my mind, is a, how do you say it, a man of his word. He means what he says, and he says what he means, and that's very important to me because you can always count on that. Now, you can disagree or agree, but at least you know where Supervisor Clapp was coming from, and as a resident here, it's very appreciative, and I've come to know Clyde too, as I have with some of the others, and his integrity is impeccable, and a lot of stuff that had been gone on in the past and has been brought up behind the scenes, I have personally checked it out myself, and it wasn't quite the way it was represented in the public, and I just want to say, Clyde, thank you very much for your representation to all of us in this county, and also for stepping up and standing up for integrity, because I think that's what we all need in our county. We can differ in issues, but we all need to work together, as many of all of us said, this is our community. Each one of you represents different parts of the community, but as a whole, it's still Calaveras County. So, thank you, and thank the others, and Merry Christmas to all of you too. Thanks.
I got mixed up about who I was supposed to be talking to last time, so I...
You talked about Mike this time.
Whatever. I'll thank you again, Mike, for your service and calling it from where you came from, and again, I would like to say thank you to Clyde because he stood up for something that I feel really strongly about. I know that we all have to make our own decisions about drugs, but he stood up for the ban, and I really, really appreciate it. He didn't turn or buckle or anything, and I can't thank you enough.
Oh, look, Stan even has a present for Clyde. This is given with my feelings, and read between the lines. It's not a bomb.
Is it coal?
Sheriff, do you have a dog to sniff?
I do. Yeah, two.
Oh, you can open your gifts now, by the way. Don't be sheriff.
Well, as a recent resident of D5, we have definitely not seen eye to eye on a lot. I was displaced by the Butte Fire, and my only option was to buy a home in Rancho. At least, that seemed like the only option at the time. You have reached across the aisle encouraging me to try to get on, get a seat on the Area 12. I didn't follow through with that because, quite frankly, the ban has depleted all of my resources, and it's been a real struggle. I know that you feel like you got elected on the banned ticket. Others said that you really got elected on the, going to get cannabis out of residential areas. of residential areas. I wish you well. I wish that we all could have come together and had more of a compromise. Because I just, so many of my friends and family, and my whole neighborhood in D2, they're homeless on their land. You know, like if we had been able to put the cannabis issue to bed in the first year, if you wanted your ban, and focused on a rebuilding, that would have meant something to the people that are still displaced and being cited for camping on their burned land. I'm deeply disappointed in how little we got done over these two years towards the You know, in Butte County, after a large fire before the campfire, that Board of Supervisors decided to waive all fees for rebuilding. That the building department was instructed to try to be an enterprise fund was completely inappropriate during a rebuild. And I wish that I could just, you know, toe the line here and be like, "Attaboy Clyde." But what the majority of the board did to the survivors of the Butte fire was not okay. Moving forward, we have to get people in their houses. We have to, we have to help people recover. I'm lucky that I have a roof over my head, because I was able to settle with PG&E. But the trauma is still there. Many of us are hanging on by our fingertips because of the partisanship that was in this body, the bullying that went on. And I, I assure you, I felt very bullied by three of you. Thank you.
Other public comments? Seen none? Bring it back. Staff, comments?
Well, I just want to say thank you Clyde. One, that you're very consistent, and I always knew where you were coming from, which, from a county administrative office perspective, is very much appreciated. And also, that you consistently had a very strong unwavering support for the administrative office and the position of CIO, which again, I appreciate, it makes my job easier. Although I'm not going to be here, I certainly am sure that the office will miss Zoe running through. And she was always the easiest one to get along with at any given time, and I certainly will, will miss Zoe as well. Hopefully, she'll grace these halls still once in a while. So again, I wish you the best moving forward, and thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you. I think Zoe will be more missed than I will.
All right, with that said-
And I'd like to thank-
Oh, I'm sorry. Megan?
Clyde, I just wanted to say thank you. I know you came onto this board a couple of years ago, and this county has seen a very difficult couple of years. And as you all know, it is incredibly difficult to sit up on this dais and endure public scrutiny and criticism. And I just wanted to, it is a very difficult job. And I just wanted to say thank you for being here, thank you for participating, thank you for being consistent, and thank you for your time and service to the county.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank the board, because I think we had a lot of great things that happened. I think the TOT was excellent. I'd like to thank Jack and Gary on that. And on the ban, I'd like to thank Gary and Dennis on that. I think those were two things that will be, was the most important things to probably happen the last two years. And I think the TOT will be appreciated for the next 10 years, probably. So, I was real grateful that as a board, we were able to work on getting that done. And I was very pleased with, it made my time here worthwhile, and I enjoyed that. I enjoyed working with pretty much, with the whole board. I enjoyed it. We had our ups and downs. It was amazing that sometimes we'd be on one side, and next time we'd be on the other side. And I did enjoy that, and I'll always remember it. Thanks again.
And with that, I'll look for a motion. Supervisor Mills?
Yes, I'll move the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Supervisor Mills, second by Supervisor Olivera. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four to zero. Do you abstain from this vote? You do. Four to zero is one abstention.
Now, be it proclaimed that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes Clyde Clapp for his dedication and public service to Calaveras County during his tenure on the Board of Supervisors, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County Calaveras, State of California this 18th day of December 2018.
There you go. You're welcome.
This is the one, first, and then-
Yeah, and then put, and then come on. Ready?
Move on, one second. Can you hold?
Just trying to do a look shot.
All right, now.
Kevin, won't you take it?
Madam Clerk?
Item number three is from the administrative office to adopt a proclamation honoring Timothy W. Lutz for his outstanding service to the residents of Calaveras County.
Supervisor Olivera, I believe you have this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's a proclamation recognizing Timothy W. Lutz for his outstanding service to Calaveras County. Whereas on March 7, 2017, the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to appoint Tim Lutz as the county administrative officer, the CIO, with an effective start date of April 1, 2017, and whereas, Tim was a working CIO in every sense of the word, expecting no less of himself than he did of his staff, and never ceasing to work tirelessly on behalf of the county, and whereas, during his tenure in Calaveras, Tim oversaw multiple projects that will benefit the county for many years to come, including but not limited to the implement, implementing Open Gov for the streamlining the budget process and providing additional transparency to the public, improving purchasing processes, overseeing beautification projects, and much-needed upgrades and maintenance throughout the county facilities, reorganizing the Office of Emergency Services to be proactive and prepared for future emergencies, creating an Office of Economic Development to support new and existing business growth, and assist in streamlining the economic development engine of the county. And whereas, when Tim arrived at the county, the administrative office had been working with limited staff for quite some time. So, he developed a vision and recruiting plan to bring talented professionals to the county, to staff the county needs. Whereas, Tim continued to refine the proposed and final budget hearings, and whereas, Tim skillfully guided the county finances through a time of difficult transition, and assisted in setting appropriate budget expectations with an eye towards the future. Whereas, Tim was well-versed in finance and accounting, and consistently carried out his duties with a high level of integrity and work ethics. Mr. Chair.
Any board comments? Supervisor Mills?
Certainly. Tim, you came in at a very difficult time. I think a county in a state of flux, from a CIO's perspective, with limited people and personnel working there, and started to develop that structure that is so necessary to our, our activity. And also, remember, the budget was right there in your face the minute you walked in the door. And you, you pulled it together, and I looked at last year's budget book, which I still have, and this year's budget book, and the, just the transitional changes that have occurred within the budget structure by itself means a lot. It's going to help us as we move forward. You have been a very stabilizing force within the county and our organization, and I hope that as you go forward and, and do the work that you're going to do from here on in your career, that you'll continue to use this as a guiding principle of what works and what doesn't work. Because I'm sure there's been times you kind of knock your head against the wall and say, "Why did I do that?" Or, "Why did that happen?" But at the same time, it was, I think, a tremendous learning opportunity for you, and we appreciate you being here and the stability that you brought with your experience and your exposure. So, thank you for your time.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tim, you walked into a rattlesnake's nest.
I was being nice.
I'm not. You walked into a rattlesnake's nest, and through your guidance as CIO, your honesty to call the good the good, the bad the bad, you gave us a path that we needed to follow. If I was to measure the county's situation when you first came on board, and take that same measurement to today, we have improved. And that's because of you. I don't know how to say this, other than you have done an outstanding job, far beyond my expectations, and I'm sure the board would agree, that you are an asset to this county. Fortunately, we're going to lose that asset. It's going to be very difficult to replace you. I wish that I had more input in that decision. But good luck to where you're going. I know it's not going to be new territory for you, but we are going to miss you. This county is going to miss you. Thank you, Tim.
Supervisor Clapp, if you'd like to-
Yeah, I'd like to thank Tim, because he always has his door open every Friday. I mean, Gary was always stealing a lot of those Fridays from me. But I appreciate that. He always was a help. He always kept me on track. I enjoyed working with you. I worked close with you. Any project I had was, when I do, I always cleared it with you till you knew what I was doing, in case someone, you know, you heard something. But I enjoyed your company. I really did. As a person, I thought you were great. I still do. And I hope you the very, very best. And thanks just for me getting to know you. Thank you.
Supervisor Garmendy?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Tim, thank you for your, for working with us here. We're in the middle of recruitment, so I don't want to say just how hard your job actually is, because it might scare people away. But dealing with five charming personalities, like we get to deal up here on a day-to-day basis, and trying to find the middle ground to keep this county running in place was a Herculean effort. And I think you handled it with grace, in very difficult times. And I just want to thank you, and I want to wish you and your, and Betsy and your, and your daughters the best in going back down to Tulare County. I know the supervisors down there, so we'll keep an eye on you, even when you're in the South Valley. But thank you for coming up and really throwing your shoulder to it, and gracefully managing a often difficult set of circumstances. Thank you.
I'm going to hold off until after public comments. I may have a lengthy spill here to go, so we'll wait and see. At this time, I'll open up to public comments.
That's all I got to say. You've done a fantastic job in the short time that you were here. I've really enjoyed working with you. I think you've got this county back on a good direction, and I know with Manny's guidance, we will continue to do that. I worked with Manny before, and he was fantastic also, and I wish he would stay. But I know he's coming out of retirement, hopefully, to, to help us out. But I wish you well in your endeavors. And again, thank you very much for what you did for the sheriff's office and for the county as a whole. I think you've brought a new light, that outside perspective, I think was probably what this county really needed, and you did a fantastic job. So, thank you very much.
So, I do want to thank you for all your support. You definitely, HR is a necessary evil. A lot of times, we have to do things people don't want to hear, don't like. Legislature passes new laws. We have a list longer than you can imagine, going to affect the first of the year. And you were definitely supportive of HR. You helped with technology. Thank you for helping us with getting NeoGov. That will be up and running the first of the year. I think that will make a huge difference in recruitment, in performance management, in onboarding. And we will be making great strides, thanks to the efforts that you brought to this county. So, thank you. You are going to be missed.
Good morning, Kristen Brink's, Health and Human Services. I just wanted to say also, and echo everything everyone said, it was a true pleasure working with you. Under your leadership, we are in a much stronger place in terms of many of our centralized policies and procedures. And as, working with just, not only just you, but your office, your team is tremendous, and we just, I really have enjoyed working with you, and I will likely continue to see you now. So-
Thank you for looking out for all of us. I was very impressed with your professionalism. And a lot of times in Calaveras County and the mountain counties, people do things from the seat of their pants. And you definitely added a sharpness and expertise that we normally don't get, I don't think. And so, thank you so much.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. Well, Tim, I wish you could stay. You've done good work. One of the things that's not been mentioned is your skills in bringing people together and swimming in the right direction, in the same direction. This is, this is really great, because when the departments work in harmony, good results happen to the taxpayer. And, and I think that the good you've done for this county and the taxpayer is going to last long after you're gone. And so, and there's another thing, very seldom do you find public officials willing to admit they made a mistake on something. And you do. And on rare occasions, when you make a mistake, you admit it and get it corrected, and don't try to hide it. Well, that's called honesty. And that is another attribute that, that you have, and we appreciate. Thank you.
You know, I was wrong once, but I was mistaken, so. Anyway, I never got to know you very well, Mr. Lutz, but, oh, Santa brought you something, by the way. Don't guzzle it now. But this gave me also an opportunity to thank you and remind you that you're getting out alive. out alive. Not all of us do. You're getting out before you can be blamed for everything. And that's another point in your favor. But I'd also like to take this opportunity to honor somebody who's been able to fend off numerous attacks by a goofball with a psychotic laugh that scares the hell out of me. But Megan, you have held up under, I think, abuse and insults. And it's not all been from the public. And some members of this Board have not treated you with the total respect I think you warrant. But Santa brought you also another guzzler.
She might be called. Any other public comments?
George Frye. Tim, it's amazing what you've done in the short period of time you've been here. I consider you a friend. I think you're making the right move. It's unfortunate with that we can't keep young people here. But in terms of your family, I don't think there's any other move to make. I wish that I could have spent a lot more time with my son, even though I did spend a lot of time with him. Kids grow up so fast, I mean, in no time at all. But I want to thank you for your service to our county. Thank you, Tim.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Megan, you have a few words you would like to say?
Yeah, just a couple. I just wanted to say, "Thank you, Tim." You know, it's been a challenging couple of years. And, you know, the CAO and council, we work so, so close, you know, day-to-day. And it's truly been an honor working with you. The level of integrity and the level of honesty is really -- the county is losing a wonderful asset. It's been very nice getting to know you. I consider you a friend. Sorry. And I really hate seeing you go. Yeah. So, I'm sure we'll stay in contact. I wish you a wonderful future.
Let's not open those things.
Tim, you could always say, "She started it."
Tim, it's been a long year for both of us, I think. Sitting near his chair and the amount of time I've spent working with you. I want to echo a lot of things that were said here. You've done a lot of good things for the county since the short time that you've been here. Working with you on agenda items and through issues that seem to be arise, at least sometimes daily, sometimes more than that, there seems to be a crisis, and you're there to handle it all the time. You and Megan, working as a team, has been great for the county. I always look forward to the agenda review meetings and our discussions afterwards on issues that we're facing in the county. And I think you tackled them head-on. You did a wonderful job. And I, too, am sad to see you go. I think I've echoed that, too, more than just myself, a few other Board members, when we made the announcement. It was somewhat of a shock. But I truly understand your decision. And this job as a CAO, being your first time as CAO, I'm sure some of the issues here in Calaveras County or in that, as far as that goes, any other county, you saw how difficult a job it could be at times, dealing with, again, five wonderful personalities and staff, and trying to get things accomplished. A lot of times, government trying to get things accomplished is a long, drawn-out process, a long task. It takes quite a bit of time, but in the short time you've been here, your accomplishments are quite a few. So, with that being said, I want to thank you very much. And I would like to say one other thing to what Bonnie had said. I don't agree with her. I think from January 4th going forward, you'll be blamed for everything. So, with that said, I'm looking for a motion.
Well, you're also going to leave here with a certification. We'll provide that to you if necessary to herd cats.
So, with that said, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move the motion.
I will second it.
I have a motion by Supervisor Clapp, a second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Passes 5-0 with one abstention.
That's six votes, Mr. Chair.
Now, we have to read this. Got to read it.
Oh, we have to read it? I'm sorry. Let us finish.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses its gratitude to Timothy W. Lutz for his exceptional service to Calaveras County, and wishes him much happiness as he begins his new chapter in life, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this 18th day of December, 2018.
Mike says he's got his steps in already for today now.
Yeah, over my quota. I'm going to step extra.
Squish in.
All right. You're going to pull this one out, sir.
Thank you.
Are you nervous, Karen?
Normally, I have the advantage of being able to jot notes, but since this was about me, I was trying to consistently make eye contact, so I'll do this off the cuff. I just wanted to thank everybody for the wonderful comments. This genuinely, truly, was a harder decision to leave than it was to come here. I really appreciate the support that I've had, the continual intellectual challenge of this job. It really has been a tremendous experience that I certainly would never forget or never trade, because I have learned so much, grown so much, lost some more hair, and grayed a little more, and I can't even blame my children for that. But I truly do appreciate the support. I really -- we have tremendous staff here in Calaveras County. That's something that I will absolutely miss. The department heads, who by and far truly are working department heads, that roll their sleeves up, that are really in the middle of the day-to-day, because they have to be. And that's tremendously admirable. I will absolutely view that as a model of a department head anywhere, because of the amount of work and effort that our departments do, and down to our line staff, which I think sets that tone across the county. So, although it is very hard to leave, I feel like we have some great assets here. I have a great team in my office. I think with continuing to have that partnership with county council, human resources, all of our key departments, that's how we can continue to progress forward and be collaborative. So, again, I feel like if I have to leave, I'm leaving at least with things better than I arrived at, for the office structure, for the staffing, and I look forward to see the continuing great things to happen. So, thank you all.
And with that hair loss, I think it was -- most of it came from pulling your hair out, not naturally. All right. Moving on, I'm going to move on to item number five. I'm going to save number four, proclamation, for last.
Item five is from Human Services. To adopt a proclamation honoring Connie McLean for 41 years of service to the residents of Calaveras County in the Health and Human Services Agency, Human Services Division, and congratulating her on her retirement.
And Supervisor Clapp, I believe you have this?
I do. Proclamation recommends Connie McLean for 41-year service as part of the Health and Human Service Agency congratulating her on retirement. Whereas, Ms. McLean began her career at Health and Human Services Agency on October 3rd, 1977, as temporary hire, it became permanent on November 1st, 1977. And whereas, Ms. McLean has served as an Eligibility Worker 1, Eligibility Worker 2, Eligibility Worker Supervisor, and Staff Service Analyst 2. And whereas, Ms. McLean has subsequently dedicated her career in service to the residents of Calaveras County. And whereas, Ms. McLean has became invaluable asset to the agency as a mentor and a leader. And whereas, once retired, Ms. McLean plans to travel especially to the coast, spending time with family, enjoying activities in the greater outdoors, and just simply relaxing.
So, Board comments? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, what a rarity to see someone in today's work world with over 40 years in one agency. That is beyond unusual. Ma'am, you could write a book, literally could write a book with how things have progressed in this county, because you watched it firsthand. So, I sincerely appreciate your dedication to, especially in the HHS area, to our county and to the residents of our county, and hope that your retirement is as fulfilling as your work was.
Thank you.
Supervisor Garamendi?
I just want to echo Supervisor Mills's words of praise. Forty-one years is a wonderful accomplishment, and all the citizens of this county, I think I speak for them, in thanking you for your dedication, literally generations of people you've seen in your work. And I really thank you very, very much. And it's certainly well-deserved, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you.
Supervisor Clapp? Any comments? No?
I'm just amazed. Where on the coast do you like going?
Central coast, primarily.
Okay.
Yeah.
I used to love Minneso.
Well, Ms. McLean, 41 years. Wow, that is a long time. And again, like Supervisor Mills said, I bet you can write more than one book. I bet you can -- for your retirement, you could probably write one a year and still have more stories to tell. So, I want to thank you so much for your dedication to Calaveras County and Human Resources Department, just a pillar and an anchor in that department. So, thank you very, very much on behalf of the Board and the residents of Calaveras County for your service. Enjoy your retirement very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Supervisor Olivera, your lights on?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Connie, you sure you want to leave? You've thought about this, right?
It was a very difficult decision, actually, so.
Okay. Well, take a rest. You've earned it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your 41 years of service.
Thank you.
I hope that there's a plan to replace you with the same caliber and performance of standard of performance that you've exhibited. So, that's going to be some big shoes to fill. No offense, but those are big shoes to fill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I make a comment?
Oh, absolutely.
I just want to say that it has been a real honor to work for the County of Calaveras, and specifically for Calaveras Health and Human Services Agency. And I have been so privileged to be just a small part of our department that provides so many services to the communities in Calaveras County. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. And Kristen, do you need some tissues?
Kristen Brink's Health and Human Services. Calaveras County is losing, as a colleague, Connie, but not as a friend. She is deeply ingrained. We adore and love her. But what I'm not sure that this Board or the community recognizes is Connie is seen not only as an expert in our benefit programs in Calaveras, but statewide. Connie is fully ingrained in our associations and looked to as a technical expert. And so, the state as a whole is losing also that knowledge. But there is no one more professional, kind, ethical, and always with her focus being the residents and the community that she is serving. If you talk to her, the clients are her number-one priority, and there's just something about her that is completely irreplaceable. Yes, we are working on a plan, logistically, but, man, Connie's an amazing person, and it's just been a true pleasure and honor to work with you, Connie. I already told you all of this, but still, anyways, just thank you for recognizing her, and you will be very missed.
And with that, we'll open to public comments.
Robin Carter, Program Manager, Health and Human Services. Ah, this is going to be hard. Connie, you've trained, supervised, and mentored hundreds of workers over the past 41 years. You've been the go-to Medi-Cal person, not only for Health and Human Services, but for numerous outside agencies and the state, as Kristen has said. I've been fortunate to have worked with you for the past 27 years and have learned a great deal from you. Your knowledge, compassion, and love for our agency will be hard to replace, and you will be deeply missed. Enjoy your retirement, relaxing, traveling, and just staying home. Thank you, Connie, for your dedication.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board. Does staff have any comments? All right. Well, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Supervisor Mills, seconded by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Congratulations, Connie. Enjoy your time.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras County, this 18th day of December, 2018, do hereby honor and recognize Connie McLean for her years of service, and express their appreciation to Ms. McLean for her loyalty, leadership to the county of Calaveras, and with her much happiness as she begins this new chapter in her life, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Calaveras County, State of California, this 18th day of December, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. There you go. Thank you. One more. Thank you.
Kristen, what'd you get? What?
Oh, okay. Oh, no, that's fine. She can send it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Connie. Good luck.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number four.
Item four is from the Administrative Office, "To Adopt a Proclamation Honoring Karen Osborne for Her Eighteen Years of Dedicated Service to the Residents of Calaveras County, and Congratulating Her on Her Retirement."
Karen, can you come up to the podium, please? Karen, we've known each other for a long time, and I've always enjoyed you since you came into Admin Office. You were always a smile, and always enjoyment to talk to. And I think you kept that at certain times in that department, when there was a lot of gloom going on, Karen always kept a smile on her face, anybody that came in there. So, from the bottom of my heart, I'm sad to see you go. I want to thank you, and we will be a continent apart, apparently. So, please, when you come back to visit, or if I'm over there, hopefully I have a place to stay for free. But I will move on. I have this item. I will be reading it with pleasure. This is a proclamation recognizing and honoring Karen Osborne for her eighteen years of outstanding service with the County of Calaveras. Whereas Karen Osborne began her career at the Health and Human Services Agency, formerly known as the Cow Works and Human Services Department, on December 4th, 2000, as a clerical assistant two, where she immediately demonstrated a willingness to go the extra mile along with a strong can-do attitude, and has kept that over the years. And whereas, as a result of her strong work ethic, Karen was promoted to the position of Accountant Clerk Two with Cow Works and Human Services Department on February 23rd, 2002. And whereas, as a result of her continued dedication to the public service, Karen was promoted once again as an accountant technician to the County Administrative Office, rejoining former County Administrative Officer Shirley Ryan, which she's going to move to Florida to rejoin Shirley, on March 29, 2004. Whereas Karen approached her new position with the same commitment that she had enshrined at Cow Works and Human Services. And whereas, on January 25th, 2014, in recognition of her outstanding commitment and work ethic, Karen was promoted to the position of Administrative Assistant Two with the County Administrative Office. And whereas Karen's dedication to excellence in public service has been continually validated in her ability to address a multiple of complex matters of concern to the county staff and the citizens of Calaveras County, always responding in a timely and professional manner. And whereas, for those who have worked closest with her have also enjoyed and will greatly miss her extraordinary sense of humor, even during the most challenging of times. And I'll open up the board comments at this time.
Karen, I'm going to miss you. I mean, you've been my neighbor for a long, long time, and so I'll never know what's going on at the place anymore. So, I don't know what to say. I don't know what's happening. But anyway, it's been a joy knowing you. I wish you weren't leaving. I wish you'd stay here, but everybody moves on, and it's been a pleasure knowing you. It really has.
And Karen, your sense of humor and your overall demeanor is well-recognized, as you've heard, and is appreciated. Even when other people were biting at the heels, you always managed to, you know, find a way to keep it going, keep things moving. And you have a wealth of knowledge and a depth of knowledge of things that have gone on in the Administrative Office over the years that I don't think it'll be easily replaced, because there's things that you just know, and you're able to pick those out and help things along. And I think that has helped in the progression with our CAO's office as we've moved forward as well. So you will be missed, and we know where Florida is. So, enjoy your retirement, and if you do come back, remember this is also always home.
Supervisor Olivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Karen, you're another one I'm going to see leave, and I don't feel real happy about that. Four years ago, when I was first elected, I had to make a transition from law enforcement to public official. And you don't know who to turn to, because you're the new kid on the block, it's new territory. You were the first person that stepped up and said, "What do you need, Mr. Olivera?" And I depended on you over the last four years so heavily, you have no idea. A long time ago, a wise man told me, "If you want to know how to do the job, talk to the people that are doing the job, not the people that are in charge." You were one of those people. You helped me out of some trouble in times when I fortunately prevented making a fool of myself up here. You're a good friend. I'm going to miss you. This county's going to miss you. And I want to thank you. Thank you, Karen.
Supervisor Garimendi?
Karen, I want to thank you also, and I want to echo the words that Mike just said, that you're the person who said, "What do you need?" When you come in that office, but probably more important, you were willing to say the things I need to know, which sometimes you don't know the right questions to ask when you first take this job, and you may not know where things are. Not where pins are, but where purchasing is, or how these things work, systems. And I want to thank you, your warm smile and your cheerful personality, but also your very strong intellect in making these things happen, and thank you for all your service to the county.
And with that, we'll open to public comments.
I feel like Karen and I have been together a long time. The first time I met her in the office, she was friendly, she was happy, she was there to ask me what she could do for me. And that happened on several occasions over the past few years. I'm sad once again to see an employee who has earned the right to retire, but I wish wasn't retiring. She's always been there, and I've seen with everybody. Thank you, Karen, for your service.
I have darkened this girl's doorway far too many times, and she never locked me out. Very good disposition, very friendly, helpful, and Santa brought you?
(inaudible).
Thank you. And I just hope people coming in are as receptive and friendly as the people that are going out. Sometimes we don't always find that to be true, but Karen was always welcoming. Thank you, kiddo.
Other public comments? Staff comments?
Well, when I first started, of course, the county caught on fire, and everybody that was supposed to help me learn the county was putting out a fire. And coming from private sector, things were quite different in government, and Karen was there to answer the million questions that I had, and was just really a shining light. When things are hectic, she smiles, and she's always been calming, and you will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Other public comments? Mr. Moss?
Good morning. Boy, it's really hard to say goodbye to Karen. Going back to the days of my previous life in environmental management, environmental health, I always would come to the office, and I would always get the answer. I was looking for whatever it was. I mean, it may not be the answer I wanted, but it was always straight across the bow. And if I had a question, Karen was always, always able to assist me and answer it. And if for some reason she didn't have the answer, she would find out. That has carried on through the Administrative Office. I can't tell you how we're going to function as she leaves these halls, because there's many times, and I've been here a long time as well, that I'll come up and say, "How do we, oh, that's very easy to ABC." Well, I'm glad you're here to tell me that. So, I would just say that in addition to the professionalism, and in addition to being a good friend, you know, Karen's sense of humor many times actually helped see things through as well. And I know that's something that's been very, very good for me to experience, and it's actually been very, very good for the staff and for the whole administrative staff. And to be able to look at something that's very serious and to be able to approach it, get it taken care of, and even with a lightheart, will be sorely missed. So, I have to say goodbye to her as well, but we know where she's going.
Well, I am so distraught at Karen's leaving that I had to leave myself, because I'm in (inaudible). In all seriousness, though, I do really want to thank you, Karen. I can attest to the chaos when Karen's not in the office, i.e. my first two weeks here when Karen was deathly ill at home. And nobody could get me answers for anything, because they were all saying, "We've got to wait for Karen to come back," because Karen knows. And that is absolutely true. I think it is going to be really hard for the Administrative Office to adapt. 2004, when you look at the average tenure of anybody in the County Administrative Office, that is incredible. In celebrity marriages, it would be like Tom Hanks or Rhea Perlman or somebody. Nobody outlasts that 2004 to today. So, I think it just speaks to your pleasant disposition, your go-with-the-flow attitude, and that's going to be tremendously missed. And of course, on the fun side, I am going to miss your stationary purchases and the controversies that those create, particularly the visceral reaction to green paper clips that will go down in legend in the office. So, thank you, Karen. I really appreciated your knowledge and your help through the time that I've been here.
Maggie?
Oh, Karen, as everybody has said, you've been in administration for as long as I've been here with the county, and so you've always been that historic knowledge, that rock in that office, and you are going to be sorely missed by all of the departments, my office in particular. And, you know, I, thank you for everything that you've done. I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss your friendship, but don't be a stranger. And congratulations. Retirement is certainly, you deserve it, so enjoy.
So, I'm sitting here, and I'm thinking 2004. So, Brent, Tom, Robert, Lawton, Jeannie Boyce, Shirley, Lori, Tim, and then the interim's in between during that time. That's quite a number of people and CAOs to serve, and you survived us all with a smile on your face and a great disposition. And Karen, I will sorely miss you, and you know that. We've been friends for so long, and I could go on, but I won't, because I'll have to use these. So, I will not normally do this, but I will make the motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Supervisor Tocanoli, a second by Supervisor Clapp. So, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. Now therefore be it proclaimed, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors hereby honors and recognizes Karen Osborne for eighteen years of outstanding service to the residents of the County of Calaveras, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras, State of California, this eighteenth day of December 2018. Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
(applause) And Karen, there is some fine print on the bottom of that proclamation that you will always have County Administrative Office know your cell phone number. Before you leave, let's make sure we have it.
Yes, they have it. They can text anytime. And I want to thank everybody that I've worked with. They've been just wonderful over the last eighteen years, and I'll miss everybody.
We certainly will miss you. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you.
And before we move on to the consent agenda, or public comment, excuse me, we clerked to ask for a five-minute break, so we will take a five-minute break. All right, we're back from break, and we're moving on to the next item on agenda, the general public comment.
Mr. Chair, could I interrupt for a moment? At the request of Bonnie, when she provided gifts, and she asked to open it, I have to mention this. This is a gift of deodorant. But that's, I don't think that's the reason that everybody thinks. A long time ago, when I first seated as supervisor, Bonnie came up to me and mentioned, "Boy, you use brute. I haven't smelled that in ages." So the note says, "To Myko, who wears my favorite man scent from the old days. Enjoy, Bonnie." Thank you.
Well, I saw it, and I was wondering, but.
I did check with Jack and with Dennis to make sure that I didn't really need it.
All right, moving on. Madam Clerk?
General Public Comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the thirty-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
That being said, we'll move on to public comments. Any public comments this morning?
Good morning, Joan Wilson, District One. It's beautiful outside. The weather has been gorgeous. We've had some rain. It's been wonderful. Of course, there's nothing that you guys can do about all that. However, at the risk of being banned in this county for not only cannabis... for not only cannabis, I'm going to say it anyway. Baby, it's cold outside, especially at night. I have asked about homelessness. Homelessness is a problem, and it's becoming a bigger problem, even here in Calaveras County. I was told to talk to the Office of Emergency Services. I did that. And by them, I was told to talk to the churches. So, I called all of the churches in the county. I received one return phone call. I don't think it is somebody else's problem. I think homelessness is our problem. Homelessness is not, and I wish I was here the other week when it was talked about, but homelessness is not always a choice. Sometimes it is forced upon you because of things that happen in your life. Sometimes it's a better option than being bullied, raped, incest, and all of the horrible things that come along with this life and this world. The fact that the churches didn't even return my phone call, I think, is appalling. The fact that the office that has to deal with that passed the buck is appalling. Homelessness is a serious problem. Yes, it's a choice for some people, and that's fine. But for some, it's not. For some, they have been burnt out of their homes, and unfortunately, they have not been able to get back into it. For some, they have been treated very badly by people that they have been told they can trust, be it clergy, be it a teacher, be it an office of the government, be it a relative. It's not the problem of the person that is homeless. It is our problem. It is your problem. I just want to find out, you know? I have been calling everybody. I haven't called my district supervisor because I can't get a return phone call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
House of Congress, Taxpayer Association. I'd like to appreciate the board and especially the handsome fellow that took Jack's place. And I have two items. One of them is having no more major terrible fires. In the Union Democrat, there's a guest opinion from Jerry Baker in addition of November 23rd. And this is, this is the best guest editorial I've ever read. Basically, what he says, these fires were, were caused by inadequate first strikes, inadequate first strikes. The first strikes are either too late or not enough retardant. Aircraft is the best way for, for first strike on a fire, and it should be overwhelming. Can you imagine, even with the additional expense of having the aircraft standing by? By the way, Mr. Baker recommends 15 large aircraft in California be ready to go for this at their next fire season. It's so simple, and yet, it's almost like the emperor calling, calling the, well, the little boy calling the emperor naked. From this moment forward, our taxpayer association recommends that you do everything you can within your influence with CSAC and, and other organizations to urge the state to review and improve first strike. Let's have more, no more major fires. We don't need another Paradise. Okay, item two, the TOT tax was raised. You probably know that. And the consequences for that had, has some fallout. The TOT tax does not exempt nonprofits or even rehab places where people don't stay longer than 30 days. It needs to do that. And it's a mi, it's a minor revision. I think the Board of Supervisors can pass an ordinance to modify that somewhat. There's a Christian camp, it's called Dream Mountain Christian Camp in Murphy's, that is hit with as 12%. And it's really hurting them because they're a nonprofit, and it really cuts back on the number of people that they can have in their, in their camp. And the purpose of the camp is not like a motel. It's for, for training, and it's really religious. But it's nonprofit. So, by making the exception for nonprofits on the TOT tax would be a step forward and would bring some justice in our county. I've got 11 seconds. Thank you.
Good morning. Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I wondered what my last presentation would be this year. I was able to say all I wanted with my gifts, but I have something to share with you. We're looking forward, less than a couple of weeks away, Christmas is coming. We're all going to be spending time with our family, our friends. I'd like to remind you and everybody in this room and on TV land that there are children, thousands of children, at the border who will not be spending a happy Christmas. And in their honor, I'm going to sing you a song. I'd like to say all my speeches in Spanish, but I don't remember my high school Spanish so much. But to honor the people who are God's chosen people, Mexicans, Hondurans, South Americans, extremely religious people, sometimes putting their faith in the wrong place, I wish them a happy Christmas, peaceful lives. I hope they're reunited, parents, children, and we can finish this shame that we're living, thanks to the Trump administration. Thank you.
Well, I agree with Bonnie. Every child that is in one of those camps, it costs $750 a night to house them in a tent. They have space blankets. They're not allowed to touch or comfort one another. As a representative from Oregon is having trouble even accessing the camps. I checked, a room at the Four Seasons in San Francisco costs less a night than what it costs to house a child in these privately owned prisons. Betsy DuVoss, his brother, has the contract from Blackwater, I believe it's now Z. They are making billions off of this refugee crisis. These refugees have come from Central America, fleeing violence that was exported from our government, our foreign policy. Even Obama, who I was, I really liked Obama on a lot of levels, but a coup under his watch in 2009 happened, and these people are fleeing violence that our arms, our foreign policy creates these refugees. Supervisor Mills, on the, you, you called for a moment of silence, and it was an odd moment of silence to me because for some reason you seemed really giddy at the last meeting. You actually had a hard time keeping a straight face when you asked us to honor President H.W. Bush. I'm not a fan of the Bushes. I feel like so much of the refugee crisis worldwide is because of the foreign adventures that we've gone on for oil. I don't understand why you called for a moment of silence and laughed as you were saying it. I, I just, I was baffled. I sat through a wonderful presentation about a homeless task force, and I heard people say, you know, that homelessness is a choice, a month after Paradise. I drove from Colorado on Election Day to vote. I had, I have to shut down a business there because it's, I'm unfunded. This was my participation trophy. I voted. I wish that I could make these hands make a peace sign. I can't. There's a symbol I'd very much like to put up here, but it's inappropriate. I won't. We need participation on all levels of our democracy, and it is high time that our representatives listen to us. Those children are God's children, and it is shameful what is happening under this administration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And please, I know that...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Meghan has been bullied by Carl Stoughton.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You have not enforced your rules.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Bye.
A little seven-year-old girl died crossing a desert in New Mexico recently. And it is a very tragic thing. I believe that we need to have peace through strength. And if we do not take care of our own selves, we cannot take care of other people. And I believe that if people are serious about trying to help people, we should help our own people that have lost their homes in these fires. And I know I'm going to get accused for conspiracy theories and all that, but I, I don't believe that these fires are started accidentally necessarily. I keep hearing on the radio that PG&E has found bullet holes in some of their equipment up there by the Paradise fire start. And I think that, you know, what we have experienced this last year is people standing up and trying to stand for what they believe on either side. And we're divided, and it, that is going to not change. We can communicate with each other, but we're divided. And I think that if we wanted to do something together, it would be to focus on the people that have lost their homes and try to help the people that want to stay in their, on their land to do that. And, you know, if something really, really even worse happens than like the Paradise fire, say we got hit by a nuclear bomb or a huge earthquake or whatever kind of tragedy that might occur, we're going to have to pull together, and we're going to have to make standards so that people can survive. Unless, we all end up in FEMA camps. Thank you.
Other public comments?
Michael Falvey, District Two, potpourri of thoughts here at the end of the year. This board's last, I think it's your last meeting, right, as a board? Mary, first off, happy holidays to the eight of you up there. Enjoy the holidays with your family. I would like to echo the recognitions of CIO Lutz, Supervisor Olivera, and the ladies, Mrs. McLean and Mrs. Osborne, for their service. I would like to echo those acknowledgements. We've had a lot of kumbaya moments the last couple hours. And echoing Ms. Whitkey's statement, calling a public official from this, from this podium right here is one thing. And I've called most of you on one thing or another. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, and if I'm wrong, I'll accept being pointed out of wrong. But verbally insulting and demeaning an individual takes it to another level, like Mr. Stoughton did. Our board, one of those commitment to civility rules posted, and not shortly after they were put up, I sat out there and watched that vicious attack by Mr. Stoughton, and I watched you sit there and not say a thing to him. I hope our next board chairman does not allow that kind of attack to happen from this podium. I will call each and every one of you on your inefficiencies, and you can call me on my inefficiencies, but I will not call you some of the names that were used from this podium. So, again, I hope our next board chairman follows through on the commitment to civility. Mr. Olivera, I, I thank you for your service. I think you were misunderstood, and too many people voted by, you know, the ridiculous statements that are thrown out there online. I think you did a good job.
Thank you.
I hope our next board is more civil towards each other, not profane towards each other, not yelling at each other, and there are more acceptance of all individuals' opinions. We have these rights as citizens. We have the right to call you on things as long as we're civil. So, you know, that comes with the territory. I hope the next board is, is more successful in their, in their efforts to legislate this county. And I hope they take all people's rights into consideration. And I hope they listen and focus on the people that are making public comment, not stare at their iPads. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Any board member wish to pull an item? Seeing none. Any staff member wish to pull an item? Seeing none. Any member of the public wish to pull an item? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion by Supervisor Olivera.
A second.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. Any other discussion? If not, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. At this time, we will go to lunch. We will have lunch from now, 12 o'clock to 1:15, 1:15, which time we'll come back and convene. And we will go into a closed session. And we will go to a closed session, item number 36.
Item 36, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1, title, interim county administrative officer.
We're going to go to lunch first and then come back and go into closed session. We can do public comment now if you'd like. Is there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, closed public comments when we return from lunch at 1:15, when we go retire to closed session. No, we can, we don't need to come back and hear because we already had public comments. So, when we come back and reconvene, we will go into the closed session room.